... March 12, 2020, Executive Order, "Modifying Certain Requirements of the Open Meeting Law." The Boston City Council is conducting this meeting virtually via Zoom. Viewers can watch the council meeting live by visiting YouTube or going to boston.gov/city-council-tv. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Certainly. Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo. Counsel Baker.
Here.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Present.
Counsel Bach, present. Counsel Brainy.
President.
Counsel. Sorry about that. Counsel Campbell.
Here.
Counsel Campbell. Counsel Edwards.
Present.
Counsel Asabi George.
Present.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counsel Flynn.
Here.
Counsel Janey.
Present.
Counsel Mahia. Counsel. Counsel O'Malley.
Present.
And Counsel Wu.
Present.
And I'll just, one more time, Counselor Arroyo. And Counsel Mahia. You have a quorum, Madam President.
Please leave your message. Thank you so much. I've been informed by our clerk that a quorum is present, and at this time, I would like to invite Counsel Flynn up, who will introduce our clergy. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, it's an honor for me to invite Father Joseph Zhang from St. James the Greater Church in Chinatown to give the invocation at today's city council meeting. Father Joseph was born in China and was ordained to the priesthood in the Archdiocese of Yanzhou. He became a member of the Augustine of the Assumption in Manila, in the Philippines, and was sent to the Massachusetts area in 2013. In 2018, he was assigned as vicar of St. James the Greater Church in Boston's Chinatown. And recently, last year, Cardinal Sean O'Malley appointed him as the administrator of St. James the Greater Church. Father Zhang is the first priest of Chinese descent appointed as a parish administrator in the Archdiocese. He is also a great member of our community. One of the unofficial mottos of St. James the Greater Church is we need to be brothers and sisters to each other. This church is welcoming to all, our immigrant neighbors, those in need, our seniors, our families, those that are sick, a homeless person seeking a coffee or a sandwich. That's the that's the church that Father Joseph ministers to. And I'm going to say one small there's a couple words in Mandarin, if I may. And it means, "God be with you and dignity to all." Shen yu ren tong zai zhan zhang suo yao ran. God be with you and dignity to all. Father Joseph, it's an honor to have you with us today.
So thank you, Counselor Ed Flynn. This totally is an honor for me to be with all of you. So good morning to everyone and wish God to bless the city through the good stewardship from all of you and each of your gifts. Shall we start the prayer, Counsel Flynn? So, okay. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Loving God, you have said, "When two and more are gathered in your name, you are among us." You are our merciful Father and Creator of all. You have calmed the stormy seas and fed thousands of the hunger. We gather here today, humbly implore you to intercede for our needs. As citizens of Boston, we are facing numerous pressing issues. First of all, please help us put an end to this pandemic crisis with an efficient distribution of the vaccines. Secondly, please restore racial harmony with respect and dignity to our lives, the inclusion of our races and genders. Also, bring safety and security to our homes and public school environment. And to provide relief to thousands of unemployed and small businesses with job opportunities. Let us implore Saint Joseph, the patron saint of the laborers, to give us work, to share our talents. Know the dignity and satisfaction that you provide us through our work. With confidence and trust, we ask all this in the name of our Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
And thank you so much for that inspiring message. At this time, we will pledge allegiance to the flag, and you're certainly welcome to join us and stay on as you like, or leave at your leisure. But at this time, we will pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So much. Madam Clerk, just want to make sure we have on the record that Counsel Mahia is with us.
And Counsel Arroyo, have we?
He is having internet connection issues and will join us as soon as he has those resolved. He's entering right now, so let's.
Oh, good.
Madam President, if I may, just want to let you know I may sound like I'm underwater sometimes, but I am here. And if you can't hear me, text me and I will be advised that I can't be heard.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please just update the attendance report to reflect that Counsel Mahia is here, as well as Counsel Arroyo.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to the first order of business, which is the approval of our minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. And Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to call the roll, please.
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, the minutes of of the last meeting have been approved unanimously.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor, beginning with docket 0320. Madam Clerk?
Docket 0320, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Mary Catherine Bench as a member of the Audit Committee of the City of Boston for a term expiring November 2023, filling the remainder of the unexpired term of Matthew Korkowski, who has stepped down.
Thank you so much. Docket 0320 will be referred to the Committee of Post Audit and Oversight. We'll move on to docket 0321.
Docket 0321, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Mike Williams as a member of the Audit Committee of the City of Boston for a term expiring November 1, 2025.
Thank you so much. Docket 0321 will also be referred to the Committee of Post Audit, and we will now move on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to read docket 0322 through 0326 together.
Thank you. Docket 0322, notice to see from the mayor of his absence from 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, February 3, until 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, February 4, 2021. Docket number 0323, notice to see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 27, 2021. Docket 0324. And I would like to beg your indulgence, there is a typo, and this candidate is actually being appointed to fill out a remainder of a term. So it's docket 0324, notice to see from the mayor of the appointment of Ernani B. Arohu as a member of the Boston School Committee for a term expiring January 3, 2022. And the letter that is in your packet does state "appointed," not. Thank you. Docket 0325, notice to see from the mayor of the appointment of Derry Howard as a member of the Boston School Committee nominating panel for a term expiring April 1, 2022. And docket number 0326, notice to see from the mayor of the reappointment of Laurie Ciati as a member of the Boston School Committee nominating panel for a term expiring April 1, 2022. Dylan.
Thank you. Thank you so much. At this time, the chair recognizes Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor. Counsel Wu, you are muted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, appreciated. So, we are we had a hearing on a number of these, 0106, 0107, and 0108. And then the others, we have received documents and resumes. So I just want to flag that I would like to withdraw one item from the agenda later on, 0204. And I will speak on it in the way that makes the most sense, given how we will vote on it. So I would defer to you, Madam President. Would you like me to speak on all of the zoning commission and landmarks folks together? Or or just a batch at a time?
You can speak at them at your preference. We will obviously be voting on these separate, so I don't know how you've prepared your remarks.
Okay.
I need to.
Because only we're in some of these documents. And so, Madam Clerk, where did you leave off?
So, matters 0322 through 0326 will be placed on file, if I'm correct.
We're just dealing with up to 0326.
So if I may, Madam Clerk, I had just wanted to flag that I would like to withdraw docket number 0204. But maybe if all the rest could be read into the record through the chair, through the president, and then I could speak on everyone together.
That is fine. So, Madam Clerk, would you just like to read all of those?
Certainly. There we go. All right. Docket 0106, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on June 3, 2020. Docket number 0106, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Nelson Arroyo as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending May 1, 2022. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket 0107, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on June 3, 2020. Docket number 0107, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Jane Cooper Braden as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term expiring May 1, 2022. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket 0108, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on June 3, 2020. Docket number 0108, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Drew Leff as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending May 1, 2021. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Dockets, excuse me, docket number 0200, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 27, 2021. Docket number 0200, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ian Renahan as an alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring on June 30, 2022. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0201, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 27, 2021. Docket number 0201, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Alice Richmond as an alternate member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term expiring on May 1, 2025. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0203, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 27, 2021. Docket number 0203, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Robert Weintraub as a member of the Back A Architectural Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2024. Commit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed. Docket number 0204 has been withdrawn. And docket 0264, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on February 3, 2021. Docket number 0264, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kristin Hoffman as the alternate member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2023. Submit a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed.
And before we move on, Counsel Wu, thank you so much. I just, before we get to your report, there are a couple of these dockets that need to be dealt with before we vote on your.
I was just going to text you.
Yes. So, we've heard a bunch of dockets. So I want to, if you'd just indulge me, and thank you for your patience, Counsel Wu. We need to first look at docket 0322, which Madam Clerk has read, which was a notice from the mayor of his absence from the city. That docket will be placed on file. Docket 0323, again, that will be placed on file. Docket 0324, that docket will also be placed on file. The next two dockets are 0325 and 0326, and these dockets will also be placed on file. We will now hear from Counsel Wu, who will give reports on these next set of dockets, with remembering that docket 0204 has been withdrawn. So now, Counsel Wu, if you wouldn't mind giving your report. Thank you so much. And we will be voting on these dockets separately. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So there are two batches within here, and so that's why I thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading them all into the record. The first half is the nominees for the zoning commission. And the council and this committee had held a hearing in late 2020, but we're awaiting some final documentation from the nominees. So that has all been received. We've had a hearing on those folks and wanted to recommend confirmation of Nelson Arroyo, Jane Cooper Braden, Drew Leff, and Drew Leff, those three members. The second half is for various of our landmarks and architectural commissions. And because there are so many of these, and we have received the resumes and documents, and several of these are reappointments, I also recommend passage and confirmation. This is for Ann Renahan, Robert Weintraub, Alice Richmond, and Kristin Hoffman, as Madam Clerk has said. The one that I wanted to actually withdraw as an oversight was the BIFPA nominee for whom we have not yet had a hearing. And so I would still plan to have that hearing in committee and give everyone a chance to meet that nominee and have a conversation before we proceed with 0204. So everyone else of the two batches recommend confirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so we will just start at the beginning there. Counsel, we have to vote on these separately. Counsel Wu seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0106. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0106 has received unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 0106 has passed. We will move on for a vote for docket 0107. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Certainly. Docket 0107, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0107 has received unanimous vote.
Okay, we should move on to docket 0108.
Thank you. Docket 0108, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0108 has received a unanimous vote. Should I go on to docket, next docket? Docket 0200, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0200 has received a unanimous vote. Now, docket 0201, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0201 has received a unanimous vote. Docket number 0203, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0203 has received a unanimous vote. Docket number 0204 has been withdrawn. Docket 0264, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0264 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to the next part of the agenda, which are just matters recently heard for possible action. We will start with docket 0296.
Do you need to just confirm that they were all confirmed?
Yes, that these dockets have all been confirmed. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could you please read docket zero two nine six?
Thank you. Docket zero two nine six, petition for special law regarding the Boston Landmarks Commission.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards, who is Chair of our Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We held a robust hearing on the docket that essentially is titled "An Act Relative to the Boston Landmarks Commission." This matter was originally sponsored by Counsel Bach and Counsel Braden. This is a homo petition, and it seeks to amend Section 2 of Chapter 772 of the Acts of 1975 by basically changing the definition of the term landmark. The change would allow for local resources that have historical significance in the community to be designated as landmarks by changing the definition of the term landmark with structural change of the syntax, really, comma, more placement than any real massive change in language. Counsel Bach offered opening remarks supporting the docket and also explained that changing the definition of the landmark will allow the opportunity for resources and places that have significant significance to the city's neighborhoods and the local people and grassroots to be eligible for landmark designation. Counsel Bach also explained that the current definition requires that resources have significance to both the city and the state, New England region, or the nation. And changing the definition will actually allow resources that have local importance to the city's neighborhoods to proceed through the landmark designation process as opposed to being prevented from doing so by the definition. We discussed a great deal also about how we're balancing historical preservation and making sure that people in the community are able to point to things that matter to them and make them landmark, but not as a defensive move to development, but more as a compliment in assuring that when people choose to develop in our communities, they understand going into the communities that these are significant things to, significant landmarks to the local people, and that we firmly believe that you can develop with historic preservation. This is not against development. We had wonderful testimony from several members of the Boston Landmarks Commission. We also had, excuse me, from the, yeah, excuse me, from the Landmarks Commission, including Roseanne Foley. We had Carl Spector from the Environment, the Environment Commissioner, and we also had Lynn Smilich, who is the Chair of Landmarks. And we also had, I think it's Greg Gaylor, also testify, who is the Executive Director of the Boston Preservation Alliance. It was a great hearing, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for participating. I look forward to having a very slight and very, very easy working session, just to make sure that we have one more go at the language and clarification, and then setting this up for the body. But thank you very much, and just wanted to let you know where it stands.
Thank you so much. Docket zero two nine six will remain in the Committee of Government Operations, and we'll move on to docket zero one nine four. Madam Clerk?
Docket zero one nine four, message and order approving the appropriation of three hun, excuse me, $306,000 for the purpose of paying for costs of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with the boiler and window replacement projects following schools. Samuel Adams Elementary School and the Patrick J. Kennedy Elementary School, excuse me, for the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of Boston Public School.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach, who is Chair of our Ways and Means Committee. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Yesterday, the Ways and Means Committee held a hearing on this docket. The formal committee report is in everyone's inboxes from Michelle Goldberg. We, I want to thank Counsel Edwards, Counsel Braden, Flynn, Flaherty, and Asabi George for attending. As folks are familiar with, there is a state program which provides funding reimbursement for school buildings. And there's sort of two programs. One is for big school renovations and replacements. That's not what we are looking at today. The other is called the Accelerated Repair Program, and it's for three specific types of systems: roofs, boilers, and windows, where the building is otherwise, you know, in an okay state, but it's got a failure of one of those systems. One of those systems is old, and so you can apply to the state to get support to replace it. And Boston has, under the Walsh administration, really accelerated our use of this program, and at times has gotten four, five, six of these projects approved in a year, which has been great. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, the, the other cities and towns seem to have caught on that this is something that they should be maximizing more. And so this year, I came before you all around this time last year to propose that we support the school department's application for, I think, six of our schools to, to go through this process. And ultimately, the process got delayed by the pandemic, and then when the, when the MSBA made their decisions, they had a huge number, I think 90, applications from around the state, and so they only funded two of our projects this year, for which we're very grateful, although we wish we could have seen more. And both of those two, the Adams and the Kennedy, are in East Boston in Counselor Edwards's district. So, for which, again, we're glad, because as the school department pointed out in the hearing, East Boston has about, has on average the oldest school building age of any, of any community in our city. And we had a really great conversation, both about this process, this sort of issue of how do we continue to maximize it, and making sure that the state is sort of treating Boston proportionally to how large a school district we are. Because I, I think that with these two schools, although they're two great projects, I think that for us to have sort of gotten our share this year, probably we should have seen a third or a fourth. So trying to think about how we work with the, with the MSBA to keep making this a really important part of our, of our repair program. And then we talked about in general the sort of need for systems upgrades in all our schools, the way that the pandemic has really raised that issue of especially air quality systems. In fact, we have so many schools where you can't even, you can't upgrade the HVAC because it doesn't exist. And Counselor Edwards underscored in particular the environmental justice need to have great air filtration in our school buildings, something which we are doing in our new build Josiah Quincy Upper School right by the highway in Chinatown, but which, you know, is an urgent need, given the airport and the ultrafine particles in the air around the East Boston and in many other parts of our city. So we talked a lot about that, about how to, how to really accelerate our progress on some of these fronts, so that our, our students are learning in the kind of high-quality buildings that they need. And, and then we also continue to discuss an issue that's come up a few times. Counsel Mejia has also raised around kind of how we build a minority-owned business pipeline to actually get these contracts around windows and boilers and roofs, because we know we're going to just keep doing these projects, and they're significant price tags, and the fact that they tend to go consistently to, you know, a particular set of low bidders is part of, it's part of the contracting problem that we see across the city. So we talked about that, and about how instead of sort of passively waiting on that, we could really build that ecosystem. We learned that the process for making windows to replace in our schools is a particularly like fraught and long fabrication process. It's like very customized, and then people have to make them, and so it might take two years, which made me think we should have a, a window-making specialized factory owned by people of color in the city of Boston. So I think there's going to be further conversation for all of us on these grants specifically related to procurement. But my task today is just to recommend, you know, this work is urgent in these two schools, the Adams and the Kennedy, and the next step is for us to pass this appropriation so that we can get the design contract on board and move towards actually doing these repairs. So my recommendation today is that this matter ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action. It is a capital docket. It does technically initiate borrowing, so it does require two readings, but I would recommend that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Counsel Bach is seeking the first reading on docket zero one nine four. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket zero one nine four for his first reading. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number zero one nine four has received a unanimous first reading.
Thank you so much. Docket zero one nine four will be assigned for further action, and we will move on to docket zero one four two.
Thank you. Docket zero one four two, an order for hearing regarding COVID-19 vaccines.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo, who is Chair of our Committee on Public Health. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday afternoon, we held a very informative and robust hearing on the COVID-19 vaccine that included a discussion on plans for equitable vaccine distribution, vaccine education, and messaging around the vaccine in the city of Boston. We were joined by members of the administration, including Chief Martinez from the Mayor's Office of Health and Human Services, and the Medical Director for the Boston Public Health Commission, Dr. Lowe. They were able to give us a presentation on both the state and city's vaccine distribution phases and Boston's current vaccine strategy, and they answered Counselors who were present's questions regarding the Reggie Lewis Vaccination Site, data collection, issues surrounding language access and cultural competency, partnerships with organizations and health centers, and communications with Boston residents. We were also joined by the Boston Medical Center, Brigham and Women's Hospital, the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, and the Cotton Square Health Center. Our community health centers and hospitals were able to give us an overview of what strategies they have in place to try and ensure equitable distribution of the vaccines to their patients, how these have shaped messaging around getting vaccinated, and how they are working with the city to continue these efforts. We were also fortunate enough to be joined by many community leaders in this space, including Boston Community Pediatrics, the Mass Coalition on Health Equity, former Senator Don Wilkerson, who was part of the Black Boston COVID inequity Task Force, Archipelago Strategies, Aes Don, the YMCA, and members of the community. This led to a productive and interactive conversation on coordination and vaccine distribution and education in order to minimize duplication of efforts. We also discussed the work that still remains to be done in the face of the dismal numbers regarding vaccination of our Latinx and Black residents in Boston, who have continued to be the hardest hit by the pandemic, and also in terms of appropriate messaging, culturally competent messaging, and leveraging the right partners and sources of funding in a collaborative way. I'd like to thank the original sponsor, Counsel Campbell. I'd also like to thank Counsel Flynn, Flaherty, Wu, Bach, Mejia, Asabi George, and Braden for joining us at the hearing. The COVID pandemic is by no means over. Our conversation regarding an equitable distribution of the vaccine to our most vulnerable residences is certainly far from over, and I look forward to working with all stakeholders going forward to help make that a reality. Thank you, Madam President, and I don't know if it's appropriate at this time to allow the lead sponsor to speak on it as well, but I see if they have not known, so.
I at least want to thank, I at least want to thank my Chief of Staff, Ellie, publicly for just the amount of work it took to coordinate all those panelists.
Thank you.
So thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Arroyo.
Thank you, and I'd just like to thank central staff as well. That was a lot of panelists and, and those along.
And so that folks know, I will call on sponsors when it's actual legislation for hearing orders from the Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Madam President.
Wonderful. We're now moving on to our motions, orders, and resolutions. And at this time, I am going to ask our Vice President, Counsel O'Malley, to please step in.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you, as we begin motions, orders, and resolutions, would you please place docket zero three two seven before the body?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket zero three two seven, Counsel Bach and Janey offer the following order for hearing regarding increased oversight, transparency, and coordination of pilot community benefit offsets.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, you have the floor. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd ask to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Liz Braden as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing, no objection. Rule 12 is hereby suspended, and Counselor Liz Braden is hereby added as an original co-sponsor. Please proceed, Counselor Bach. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Our city and its large private nonprofit institutions are utterly intertwined. You see this in my district. We've seen that this year, especially when you look at the relationship between public city infrastructure and Boston's university and hospital life sciences system. We had a strain of COVID-19 go almost straight from a major life sciences gathering to the city's homeless shelters. Then we had the university and hospital world spring into action under the city's public health careful, like administration to get our homeless population tested and housed, including in university dorms, because we really are all connected here in the city. Throughout this crisis, we've relied on the academic and medical world's expertise and resources, while they have relied on the city's public health department for coordination on everything from ICU beds to testing and for more direct access to the most vulnerable populations we've needed to serve. Because even though we're all interconnected here in Boston, we also have this chasm between the resources of private nonprofit institutions and Boston's low-income communities of color. That's a chasm that in my district is often represented in Mission Hill, Fenway, or even the West End by low-income housing that backs right onto university or hospital property, and yet lives in a different reality. When we recognize this, we recognize how much we need these large private nonprofit institutions to be part of a coordinated response to Boston's racial and economic inequality crisis, just as they've been part of a tightly coordinated response to COVID-19. That crisis of inequality is one that existed before the pandemic and has only been deepened over the past year. I'm very proud that our City Council President, soon to be our acting mayor, saw this need at the start of her term and established a new pilot reform committee, which I'm honored to chair. Since then, we've successfully worked with Mayor Walsh and the Assessing Department to commit to a reassessment of pilot property valuations for this calendar year, since that hasn't happened for over a decade, and so many of the critical ways that the city seeks to bridge this inequality chasm are funded through the General Fund, which needs the key support that comes from pilot cash contributions. We really rely on those. This hearing order is about the other piece of the pilot program, the community benefit offsets. This year, the city asked for over $112 million in pilot payments and received about $34 million of that in cash, with institutions collectively offsetting almost $53 million of their pilot payments through community benefits. So that means that about 61% of the pilot contributions the city receives are in the form of community benefits. As our communities have discussed community benefits again and again, we hear a bunch of questions about how these are defined and how they're targeted at that, that inequality gap that I mentioned. You know, I think that community benefits from our hospitals, universities, museums can be critical. They can be real in-kind contributions that replace money we would spend from the General Fund. But that's what we need to be asking for, right, is a community benefit system that actually ensures that more of our Boston Public School graduates are able to attend these universities in their neighborhood, grow up to work in the city's hospitals and museums. And we've heard again and again from the Pilot Action Group, from folks in our neighborhoods, many of my constituents who, as I said, live in the shadow of these institutions, we want to be part of determining that, and we want to be in close coordination with the institutions. As I've talked to institutions over the course this year, I've heard lots of them whose boards are focused on these questions of, of equity and how we really reduce the racial and economic disparities in our city. Like I said, as with COVID-19, to really get there, we have to have a coordinated targeted strategy, and it means that we need a reboot and evaluation of how we do the community benefits offsets. So, you know, as I said, I've been really grateful for the Council President's leadership on this. I'm excited to work with her, with Counselor Braden, the Pilot Action Group, our constituents, and all our institutions who participate in the pilot program, which really is a model that we rely on, to work on and improve framework for a more targeted system of community benefits. And this hearing will be a step in that direction. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Counsel Bach. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I'll keep it brief. Counsel Bach has summed it up nicely, and I want to start by thanking her as well as Counsel Braden for their partnership. As folks know, our districts are the districts that are heavily populated with universities and medical institutions. And I would like to just emphasize Counsel Bach's appreciation. We know that these institutions are amazing partners for our city, and this is really a call to, for more accountability, more oversight around the community benefits piece. So I'm really grateful to work with my Sisters in Service, Counsel Bach and Counsel Braden, as well as all of my colleagues on the City Council, as well as those in our community and our nonprofit partners, to tackle this issue and to have a, a process that works for, for everyone. So just grateful for the opportunity to lead here, grateful that we have the Pilot Committee that is being chaired by Counsel Arroyo. So thank you again for your partnership and your leadership, and looking forward to making sure that we have a system in place that is working for our residents as well as our institutions. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Alston Brighton. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I also want to thank my colleagues, Counselor Bach and Janey, for your leadership on pilot reform and accountability, especially for the initiative to set up a pilot committee in, in City Council. Our work and relationship with higher education and medical institutions is critically, critically important to the fiscal health of our city, as well as to the overall well-being of our community residents. As we've learned throughout the COVID crisis, public health crisis, communication and partnership with higher education and our medical institutions and partners and neighbors has been vital, and it's been very, very important part of our response to the COVID crisis. Across the city of Boston and in Alston Brighton, Alston Brighton is, is, is home to several large pilot-paying institutions, and as these institutions have their own master plans for land use and expansion, we must have a community-driven master, public master plan that informs development decisions, as well as community benefits, the, the community benefits that we hope to see. The pilot program is deeply in need of updating to ensure adequate and appropriate community benefits. And, and I look forward to this conversation to further ensure, reassure our community members, Boston's residents, and cities, and the city services that we rely on, that the institutions, their contribution is taken into consideration when addressing community-identified need for a more equitable city for all. I look forward to, to working on this, and I want to thank, again, thank you all, Counsel Bach and Counsel Janey for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Braden. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Councilor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to commend the makers for this and the leadership in creating a committee to have this conversation literally permanent and part of our growth as a body. I just wanted to note that, you know, there's been a great deal of movement, and myself and Councilor Asavi George actually filed legislation on the pilot and actually making sure that there was assessments done on an annual basis and specifically requiring that universities are being honest about the taxable and non-taxable lands or income that they have on their property. So, we filed this actually last, I think, want to say last year, or at the beginning of last year's term, and as, well, last year is a vacuum of many things. What I'm looking forward to is having that conversation with this conversation, making sure that as we go to file additional legislation this year, that we have a robust version of that home petition to make sure that we are, excuse me, it was actually a city ordinance, making sure that we're encompassing all of the aspects, not just looking at how we, specifically at how we define what is a community benefit and what's acceptable for our program, looking at how we're making sure that they are assessing on an annual basis and with, based on the current property taxes, and also making sure that we have a full understanding of the taxable and non-taxable properties within the university's campus. When we tried this conversation several times, we were rebuffed by the administration. We were told that such efforts would be too onerous and were not worth pursuing. I'm so happy to see that we're not giving up on that conversation, because we believe transparency and understanding what is really being lost in this moment from the institutional anchors, what's really being lost in terms of money is important for us to see as a city. Also, it's important for us, as we're so heavily dependent on property taxes, that we are looking to expand the table of people who need to contribute to the future and the health and the safety of the city of Boston. So I'm very excited about this hearing. I'll bring the draft, the ordinance that we filed last time with us, and I'll make sure that we're, as we're having this conversation, it gets rebuffed and only enhanced. So thank you so much to the makers for this conversation.
Thank you, Councilor Edwards, and I assume you'd like to add your name?
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Lydia Edwards as a cosponsor. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Councilor Asavi George, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair, and I would like to congratulate first and thank the makers of this hearing order. Please add my name. I know this certainly will be a robust conversation, as it has been over the many years that I've served on this body. We know that ensuring an entire pilot, that the entire pilot process is clear, timely, transparent, and thorough is essential for maintaining positive relationships between our large nonprofit partners and surrounding communities. As Councilor Edwards noted, that we've been working on an ordinance to further streamline the community benefits agreements, and I'm looking forward to both conversations, this hearing that is before us today and the work that Councilor Edwards and I continue to do. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Asavi George. Would you like to add your name?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Sure. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Inisa Asavi George as a cosponsor. Is there any further discussion on docket 0327? Seeing none, would any other counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Ed Flynn. Please add Counselor Ricardo Arroyo. Please add Counselor Michelle Wu. Please add Counselor Michael Flaherty. Please add Counselor Andrea Campbell. Please add the Chair. And docket 0327 will be referred to the Committee on Pilot Agreements.
Sorry, my internet is really bad, so I can't do audiovisual, so please add my name.
Sure. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Julia Mejia as well. And as I said, docket 0327 will be assigned to the Committee on Pilot Agreements. Madam Clerk, would you please read and place before the body docket 0328?
Docket 0328, Councilors Bach and Janey offer the following order for hearing regarding reducing barriers to securing rental housing in Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Councilor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to ask to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Andrea Campbell as a third original cosponsor.
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Rule 12 is hereby suspended, and Counselor Andrea Campbell is added as original cosponsor to docket 0328. Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, last year, I cosponsored a hearing order with yourself, and Counselor Edwards focused on fair housing in Boston. And during that hearing, we talked about working to reduce illegal discrimination in Boston through measures, including fair housing testing. But what also came up quite often during that discussion were the legal barriers and forms of discrimination that residents face when applying to rental housing. Background checks that landlords are able to do, including credit checks and criminal background checks, mean that many of our residents have a hard time finding the suitable and affordable housing that they badly need. When we talked about Council President Janey and Counselor Campbell's filed legislation on the role of credit discrimination in creating a barrier to employment, housing came up at that time last year as a parallel case. It's not necessarily best addressed through the same legal mechanism at the Human Rights Commission, but we do really need to tackle it. And, you know, because of the, before the economic impacts of the pandemic, credit checks were already making it difficult for folks with low or nonexistent credit scores to find housing. And that was true even when those individuals have a housing voucher that means their rent's guaranteed by the federal, state, or local government. We heard about that from the BHA at our hearing, and it really doesn't make any sense. If the US federal government will back you, which has the best credit in the world, your landlord doesn't need a credit check. With the impacts of the pandemic, which has left so many folks suffering under substantial rent debt and other debt, or facing eviction once the moratorium lifts, credit scores will take a hit, and so housing-linked credit checks are going to make it even harder for our residents to get back on their feet. We need to move away from doing this in the city of Boston, both with our own affordable housing IDP resources, and in whatever way we can to restrict and discourage the rental housing world of the city from using this tool. I'd be remiss not to mention that criminal background checks similarly are a huge barrier for residents reentering the community. They can include convictions up to 10 years old in some cases, as well as misdemeanors. Counselors Flaherty and Flynn have filed a hearing order looking at all the ways that quarries hurt these folks, and I'm really grateful for their holistic work on this front. We just want to make sure that as we're talking about these background checks and sort of focusing on credit, that we're also folding that into the conversation here, so that it's part of the concrete legislative work we're planning on discrimination and access to housing. The, you know, those barriers to housing are also part of perpetuating the revolving door of homelessness and incarceration, and it's something that we really need to break. So while this is a hearing order, I just, I do want to flag for colleagues that it's really designed to lead to legislation very soon in this calendar year. We determined when we were talking about the employment one, like I said, last fall, that it didn't make sense to kind of append this on there, but that it is something that needs legislative action. Many other municipalities around the country have made progressive reforms to both of these types of credit and criminal background checks in housing, enabling more of their residents to be housed, and that's something we've been looking at already, those models, and I know DND started to do so too, and we think there's some great things to emulate. So it's past time for Boston to follow suit and live up to our goal of housing for all. I really, I want to thank my cosponsors here, President Janey and Counselor Campbell, for honing in on credit, like I said, on the employment side, which has really pushed us to look at it in detail on the housing side here. So, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bach. The Chair now recognizes the Council President, Councilor Janey. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I want to start by thanking my sisters in service, again, Councilor Bach and Councilor Campbell, for their partnership and leadership on this issue. As Councilor Bach has already stated, we had a lot of discussion at previous hearings when Counselor Campbell and I introduced legislation that would ban credit checks from employee hiring, and we heard loud and clear from advocates, from residents, from colleagues on the council, the importance that looking at housing as well. We know that credit checks target populations that have been victimized by generations of poverty. Credit checks unfairly penalize residents with student loan debt, medical bills, or just bad credit history. More often than not, they are individuals from the Black and Latinx communities. We know that using credit checks is a barrier of entry for housing, for employment, and it leads to more cycles of poverty, as well as housing instability and unemployment. Now, as I've said before here and elsewhere, credit checks do not define a person's work ethic or their worth. And the same is true for criminal background checks. We know that many municipalities are looking at this across the nation, just to name a few, Seattle, Portland, Detroit, Minneapolis, Washington DC are in the process of reforming their housing policies to remove these barriers that would discriminate against poor people and often poor people of color. We know that with COVID-19, this pandemic, even though we hope at some point soon with vaccines, that we will regain some sense of being able to gather and support our businesses and do some things that we did lat, well, two years ago now, but the impact is going to be lasting when it comes to our economy, when it comes to housing, and we have to do all that we can to remove barriers and to remove them quickly, especially given the nationwide evictions crisis that we're in. We know that this is particularly true here in Boston, because we had a housing crisis long before the pandemic. And so, again, I am just thankful for the partnership of Councilor Bach and Councilor Campbell, and for the leadership of not just folks on this body, but so many out in the community, and looking forward to partnering, to have this hearing quickly, and to move forward on some sort of legislation, as Councilor Bach said. So again, many thanks to all.
Thank you. Madam President, the Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Mattapan. Councilor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to my council colleagues, Councilor Bach and Madam President Janey, for the partnership here, and really excited about this, right? This did come up in the credit checks hearing that we held last year, and excited to continue to move forward on a possible legislative solution to help residents with respect to this critical issue in the housing context. And obviously, coming out of COVID-19, it is going to be critically important that we eliminate all barriers that will stand in the way of folks not only sort of getting back on their feet, but, you know, obviously taking advantage of homeownership opportunities, getting a job, all the things we need to be successful, not only in our lives, but to support our families. I also want to thank Counselor Edwards as well, who of course brought us through that process as the Chair of Government Ops, also was pushing the housing piece, and we were pushing, of course, the administration for some specifics. She too has been a partner in this effort as well, and so looking forward to continuing to all work together to get this done. And lastly, thank you to all council colleagues. Every single council colleague voted in favor of that credit checks legislation, even though it came back to us. And that says a lot about the leadership of folks on this body, and just how important it is to reduce the use, or I should say, eliminate the use of credit checks, credit history in quarries, which of course poses a barrier to everyone in the city of Boston who's really trying to get ahead and do the right thing to support their families. So thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you, Counselor Janey, and thank you, Counselor Bach.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Again, I echo the thanks to the leadership for Counselor Janey and Counselor Bach and Counselor Campbell. All of what they said about the injury of the decision made a while ago in your life, whether it was to pay your rent instead of paying maybe your credit card bill, shouldn't be something that judges, that is forever, something that marks you or defines your potential or your ability to work hard. So I completely echo those things. I just wanted to note also, though, in the conversation, that there is also something that shouldn't completely mark your ability to be housed or your ability to pay rent, and that is a prior eviction, as this body had supported a resolution for the Homes Act, which is to conceal eviction records prior. That Homes Act actually made it through both houses, and I'm very proud of that. The first time it made it through the House, it made it through the Senate, it made it all the way to the Governor's Desk, of which he then vetoed it. And just to give you some background, the people who are being evicted and who are more likely to be evicted, actually two and a half times more than anybody else, are Black women in Massachusetts. That's a study here that demonstrates that that scarlet letter E is carried more by Black women than any other group, and the fact is, this body could see it, and so could both of the bodies of the State House, and the fact that the Governor, despite it being on his desk, despite it being a modified version that actually had the support of landlord groups, he still vetoed it. And so I just hope that as our conversation goes and we look at the ways in which the city and our programs can remove scarlet letters of all kinds, whether it's the scarlet letter C for criminal records or scarlet letter E for an eviction, that we remove a moment in someone's time and assure that we're the city of second chances, we're the city of immigrants, we're the city of making your life new. This is the city that I chose to be in, and this is the city that, and that while you may not be from here, you can be something here. And this, this is, this kinds of policies and that kind of voice, I just thank you so much, Counselor Janey, Counselor Bach, and Counselor Campbell for being dedicated to that, and I look forward to getting the credit discrimination legislation back on another mayor's desk to make sure that we actually eliminate that as well. We're going to do that too. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. I assume you'd like to add your name?
Oh, absolutely.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Lydia Edwards. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Alston Brighton. Counselor Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also, I want to thank the lead sponsors, Counselor Bach, Counselor Janey, precisely Council President Janey and Counselor Campbell, for really leading the conversation on this. This is such an important issue. Credit checks, criminal background checks, large security deposits and additional fees are barriers to securing long-term rental housing for young professionals, working families, aging seniors, and many others. As we know, there is a housing crisis in Boston, and in particular, a family housing crisis. This, the family housing is a particular concern of mine, and we must be aware of how credit screening requirements add further barriers to securing housing for those who are low-income without banking and relying on housing vouchers and other factors. I really look forward to participating in this conversation to see if we can make necessary reforms, particularly as it pertains to making rental housing more accessible to secure, and secure, to, more easily accessible for working families. Thank you, and I really look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. You wish to add your name?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Liz Braden. Any further discussion on this docket? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as cosponsors? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn. Please add Counselor Asavi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Wu, Counselor Mejia. Please add the Chair's name, and docket 0328 shall be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Madam President?
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. I really appreciate that and my excitement to get my own dockets before the body. I failed to assign one to a committee, so I just want to go back to docket 0142. This was, we heard the report from Councilor Arroyo, the Chair of Public Health, and just want to say officially that docket 0142 will remain in the Committee of Public Health. So, thank you so much. Now we will move on to the next dockets, which are, we're going to start with docket 0329. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0329, Councilors Bach and Campbell offer the following order for hearing regarding police contracts as policy documents.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you please, I would ask to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Lydia Edwards as a third original cosponsor.
Seeing and hearing, yes, you can, we can do that. We don't need any discussion on it. Counselor Edwards is so added. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I'll try to be brief. This is a refile from last year. We discussed, you know, as we dug deep into the issues of our police budget and police accountability, the completely central role that our police contracts play in that, which are up for negotiation this year, so they all officially lapsed on June 30th of last year. And so we held a working session on September 8th, followed by, sorry, a hearing on September 8th, followed by a working session on November 30th of last year. And, and they really were focused, as it says in the title of this docket, on those contracts as policy documents. This council does not sit in the room and negotiate our labor contracts, but we do have a responsibility to the residents of Boston to set the public policy expectations for how, you know, really, the most important, serious thing that government can do, which is to use force, right? That's, that's what police departments are authorized to do. That's a really heavy thing, and our contractual arrangements around how that's done and how it's held accountable and how it's transparent, to me, that they're the height of a public policy concern, and so that's what the council really needs to be exercising, public policy oversight over. So for our working session of November 30th last year... So, for our working session of November 30th last year, I introduced a memorandum, which kind of summarized a bunch of the issues that have come up and the kinds of public policy expectations that the council may wish to set. And we had some initial conversation of that, but I think we need to have further conversation of it this year, and it really is an urgent thing as we know that those contract negotiations are ongoing. And, you know, and we need to, obviously, when this council deliberates about something, we deliberate about it in the light of day. So, we're filing this, refiling this and expecting to have further working sessions, too, to discuss that document. And I will just say, I've said several times, as the Chair of Ways and Means, all contracts come to our committee. I am really trying to broadcast for all parties involved the council's public policy expectations now so that we are not in a position where, in a year, a contract comes to us that is unacceptable in terms of these core concerns about accountability, about transparency, about civilianization, and about fiscal responsibility in a context in which we have seen the pay and budgets of our sworn officer side of the House grow faster than our civilian departments in the city of Boston. So, these are all issues that we've taken up, and they're issues that I want to see this council take a clear position on so that that can be the weather in the room for the folks who are at the part, at the table, making good faith negotiations in a city that believes in unions and believes in strong labor protections, but believes also in protections and accountability for all of our residents and the need for real reform in policing. The last thing I'll just say is that I would be remiss not to mention, there's been enormous progress on getting police reform into law since we originally filed this hearing order. So, since that July filing, we've had this council pass in partnership with the mayor and the police task reform, major police reform task force, you know, passed major legislation that changes and upgrades the accountability in Boston. And then, we've also seen state legislation passed that allows for certification of police officers. The thing is that all of that reform needs real implementation, and some of that is our protocols in the department, but some of that is changing our contracts to reflect those new obligations and expectations. So, I also think that the passage of that legislation, there's been a lot of leaders on this council, councilors Campbell, Arroyo, and Mejia pushed for a civilian review board, which we now have. The next step of that, after passing that legislation, really is these contracts, and especially because of how our contracts have historically frustrated discipline at the police commissioner level. If we don't change them, they'll frustrate discipline at the civilian review board level as well. So, that was not short, as I had promised, but I really can't think of a more important issue before this council, and I'm grateful to councilors Campbell and Edwards for being my cosponsors on it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilor Bach and Councilor Edwards, for the continued partnership. This is a critical piece of the policing reform discussion, but doesn't often get the public attention or the space to discuss these critical issues. And so, really excited to continue to talk about the role that these contracts play and frankly, at moments, limiting what we can do in terms of policing reform and creating greater transparency and accountability. You know, proud to have worked with this body last year, and of course, with Councilor Arroyo and Councilor Mejia, and Councilor Edwards as the Chair of Government Ops, to, of course, get the civilian review board passed and the Office of Police Accountability and Transparency set up, very historic. But, you know, at the end, there was a battle, right, of going back and forth to push the envelope of what we could do in that legislation because of the limitations that the contract puts in place. And so, I'm really excited to continue to engage residents, advocates on these discussions, and also to invite and open up the space for advocates who've been pushing the conversation around contracts and policing, police contracts, as well as other local laws that sometimes get in the way as well. So, thank you, Councilor Bach and Councilor Edwards, for the partnership. I'm looking forward to the discussion and, of course, looking forward to figuring out what else we can do to transform some of these conversations that can be very limiting at times for us as counselors. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. My cosponsors have been more than detailed and accurate in their description of what this conversation is going to be. So, I will not belabor by adding any additional comments. Thank you again for letting me be part of the leadership team for this conversation, councilors Bach and Councilor Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other discussion. A show of physical hands for those who would like to add their names. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Wu, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia. Counselor Braden, I have you. Anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Could you also add the Chair?
Thank you.
Docket 0329 will be referred to the Committee of Ways and Means. We'll move on to docket 0330.
Docket 0330, Council of Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss zoning and the community outreach process for life science, life sciences laboratories in the city of Boston.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, may I add Counsel Flaherty as an original cosponsor to this hearing?
Yes, seeing and hearing, no objections. Counsel Flaherty has been added as an original cosponsor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm filing this hearing this week to discuss how we can be sure that we can have a thorough community process for life science laboratories. Boston is a hub for science and technology industries. We have seen in recent years that there are multiple proposals from various companies that hope to construct life science laboratories in the city of Boston. With the recent development boom, there are many changes to the landscape of our neighborhoods in areas currently zoned for industrial and manufacturing use may now be directly next to or about residential areas. Last year, a life science lab began construction right next to a residential building without a thorough community process on Sleeper Street, which was concerning to neighbors in the Fort Point area in the South Boston waterfront. Because the laboratory was in a area zoned as restricted manufacturing, it allowed the proponent to bypass a community process as the project was deemed as zoning compliant. Residents have expressed concern to me and to Counsel Flaherty about the lack of a community process with such projects, especially during a pandemic when neighbors are unaware of these types of testing that would be conducted in the laboratory. Residents should have a say in what gets spilled in their community, especially if a laboratory can potentially impact public health and safety in the area. We understand that, at the moment, the demand in commercial real estate has shifted from traditional office space to life sciences during the COVID-19 pandemic. And that investment in research and drug making will benefits Boston's economy as we recover from their crisis. We welcome them. But we also want to consider amending the zoning code or having a discussion on this issue in setting forth policies to ensure that residents are afforded the opportunities to have input and offer feedback on public safety, after-hours construction, and other quality of life issues when a laboratory or similar development is being proposed in their area. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Flynn for adding me as an original cosponsor. Counsel Flynn mentioned, Boston is the hub of life sciences, particularly down the South Boston waterfront. We're seeing a significant influx of companies wanting to come to Boston, along with the Ray Flynn Marine Industrial Park area. And thanks in large, that's in thanks to large part of world-class higher education institutes and the best hospitals in the world. So, we're proud of the life-saving treatments and cutting-edge solutions that these industries, you know, bring, provide here in Boston, but also bring to the world. So, the growth of life science industries prevents us, presents us in our region with enormous opportunities, including good jobs for residents. But the growth in our residential neighborhoods does present some unique challenges that deserves a public discussion. You know, a lot of our city planning has been focused on the growth of mixed-use developments, and that's development that aims to create, you know, vibrant neighborhoods that balance building, you know, much-needed housing stock, but also including commercial and office space for local businesses and restaurants, et cetera. Life science buildings can look and feel different than other buildings in the neighborhood. Oftentimes, we're now starting to see them sort of coming closer and closer to the neighborhood. So, residents often have questions as to what type of research is being done in the lab, questions about the height of the buildings, particularly the, the, I'm trying to find the proper, like, not the guts of the building, but the venting and also the machinery. Oftentimes, we see that these labs, they put them on the roof. And in some instances, they're as high as the mechanicals, that's the word I was looking for. The mechanicals can be sometimes as high as 35 feet in addition to the roof line. And so, again, lots of questions come up. And we've also seen some developers get a little cute, too, when they, they put in sort of their LOI with respect to the BIA that, you know, they're looking to do a commercial building, but they never mention the possibility of a lab space. And so, you know, there are LOIs that go in as research and development, which allow the developer to easily transition to lab. But when that's left out of the documents, sometimes people, in particular communities, direct about it, go up in arms because they thought that there was going to be sort of a regular office building, and now it's a lab, and they want to know what's going to be tested there, et cetera. So, this is more than timely, particularly given the economic downturn that we're going to find ourselves in. And developers will be coming in, looking to go from residential to commercial, or commercial to office to lab. So, these are things we need to be very mindful of throughout the entire city. But, so, look forward to an expedited hearing. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the lead sponsor.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other discussion. A show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Bach. Please also add the Chair. Docket 0330 will be referred.
Counselor Janey.
Oh, sorry, so much.
Thank you.
Also add Counselor Campbell. Any others? Wonderful. Docket 0330 will be referred to the Committee of Planning, Development, and Transportation. We'll move on to docket 0331.
Docket 0331, Counselor Edwards offered the following order for hearing regarding the state of affordable housing as to Boston's inclusionary development policy.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm excited to start this robust conversation about our IDP policy in the city of Boston as we are so grateful that the State House has passed our zoning amendment for linkage. But also, just wanted to note to folks, it included language that discussed having an affordable housing policy in our zoning code. And so, what I'd like to do before we go and change what that language could be is to have a robust conversation about our current policy. By way of background, 2015, Mayor Walsh put out an executive order that essentially came up with a modern version of the IDP policy that we have. That's 13% of the units in buildings, 10 units or more, or at least 10 units, should be at an average AMI, or area median income of 70% to 100%. Those numbers, how basically translate to, for a family of four, 100% AMI, which is our average income, according to this study, or according to federal guidelines, is $119,000 for a family of four and $83,000 for an individual. All right, so that's 100% AMI or average AMI, with the affordability being from 70% to 100%. Okay, so those are the percentages working in for affordable units. And the fact is, for many people, according to our own studies in the city of Boston, 27% of Bostonians make less than $35,000. 44% make less than 60% AMI, or $71,000. So, what does that mean? 71% of Bostonians make less than the average affordable unit. So, we can do better. We can do better. We have to do better. And that's what this conversation is about, how we're going to do better. There's the analysis of the 13% in and of itself, that that's the requirement and how we probably should raise that. And the analysis of looking at how some developers skirt that obligation altogether by building units that are just nine units and not having to build any affordable units. So, we need to talk about that. Then we also need to talk about the average incomes or what qualifies or what is defined as affordable. The area median in income includes cities such as Newton. It includes Brookline. It includes cities all the way up the North Coast. And the fact is, it is not really focused just on Boston. We need to do that. And so, what I'm hoping to do is have a robust community conversation to get to what those percentages are. The 13% needs to go up while the average income qualifying for it needs to come down. And what does that sweet spot look like? And I'd love to hear from the community about what that looks like, obviously, for my colleagues as well, who have been in this, who I'm sure every single one of you have heard the complaint that the 13% is too low and the 70% is not reflective of the average income of the person who's needing the house. So, that's why I'm introducing this. I'm excited to get to work on this. I'm also excited to ultimately have some concrete legislation that can go into our zoning code by the end of this year. Again, we're governed by an executive order right now, and we want to make sure that regardless of who the executive is, that we, as a city of Boston, put into our laws permanent change for affordability and standards as we move and develop and grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Counselor Edwards. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.[1598.98]
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Edwards for filing this order. I've, uh, uh, been a longtime, um, advocate for updating our city's inclusionary development policy to include the codification of the program to provide permanence, predictability, and transparency to the process, as well as to raise the level of affordable commitment to reflect, uh, the need for affordable housing in our city. Um, I recently partnered with Counsel Flynn and Counsel Edwards on a hearing to discuss potential updates to the IDP to make it more effective. Too often, we hear that the, uh, AMI is too high on the units, uh, or, uh, that not enough affordable housing is being built through the IDP program. Take a look at the South Boston waterfront and the, um, colossal missed opportunity there, um, as well as, you know, uh, we learned that developers are, are now, uh, building nine units instead of 10 to be able to, um, to skip out on, on the contributions. So I guess we've seen a number of different sort of iterations of, uh, and head fakes as to how folks have been able to get around IDP. So, uh, we have heard through the BPDA, um, at, uh, our last hearing that they were supportive of lowering the threshold, as well as looking at possible square footage requirements instead of the number of units under development, which I would support, I would support a scaling, um, review, um, you know, anything over a certain amount, or in between a certain amount, or under a certain amount should all be on the table. Uh, I think it's absolutely critical that we're using every tool in the toolbox to build more affordable housing in our city, uh, so that the people that built this city can stay in the city. Uh, we're seeing the middle class squeezed out at, uh, at all ends here, and, uh, we're becoming Manhattanized, the city of the very rich and the very poor. And so we need to do more. IDP can clearly play a role, um, and I just think that we need to be a little more creative, make sure that people are not skipping out on contributions and/or have some form of a sliding scale, uh, and also incentivize developers to, to do the right thing. So I'm looking forward to, to this hearing and to, uh, to have a conversation with a wide range of stakeholders and perspectives. And I'll continue to, uh, advocate for, uh, again, more clarity and more transparency with respect to the IDP in the city, uh, and look forward again to working with the lead sponsor and my colleagues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, um, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Edwards, um, for filing this today, and really for her leadership on this in terms of the here, the home rule petition that enables us to even be having this conversation. Um, I think that, uh, you know, when we passed, this body passed the affirmatively furthering fair housing zoning amendment, um, you know, one of the pieces of that is encouraging, um, and requiring our projects to go above and beyond in terms of fair housing access. And a bunch of the implementation options we put on the table for people are voluntary kind of improvements to the IDP policy. And it's precisely because there are respects in which our current IDP policy doesn't go as far as it should in providing access for people from all walks of life to all our neighborhoods. So, I mean, to me, in, in a district with a lot of neighborhoods that have been historically exclusive, that means that I think that our policy should tilt much more strongly towards onsite affordable housing. Um, it also means that, as, as already been discussed, in many places, we need deeper affordability. That costs more money, yes, in people's pro formas, um, but it's essential for having that full diversity. Um, and, uh, I, I'm really excited to work on this. Um, I, uh, do have a background in affordable housing finance, so I'm happy to show up, Counselor Edwards, at these, uh, working sessions and kind of, um, help have the conversation about viability, because I think that's where we always hear pushback on this policy is, oh, you know, we couldn't possibly do more because it will threaten projects. Um, and I, I think there absolutely is a sweet spot, you, like, we, we want to see housing built for Bostonians of all incomes, and to get that done, like, things have to be financeable. Um, but I don't think our current policy hits that sweet spot just right. Um, and I, and I think we could do more, and I think we could have a more nuanced policy that, uh, that, that creates homes for more of the families we're really trying to keep here in the city of Boston. So just really grateful, as ever, for Counselor Edwards and her leadership on this, and looking forward to the conversation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very quickly, would like to thank Counselor Edwards on this hearing order to review our IDP provisions for affordable housing. I have a particular interest in family-sized housing and, um, that works very nicely with, um, my work around family homelessness. If we don't have housing, it's, it's really hard to find answers and solutions to family homelessness. So let's, uh, continue to do this work and, uh, increase the number of deeply affordable units and family-sized units here in the city of Boston. Uh, please add my name, thank you very much, to the maker and to you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to thank Counselor Edwards for her leadership. This is so, been so long in the making, uh, and it's, it's past due that we really addressed this, this issue. Um, you know, in Alston Brighton, we've seen an incredible, um, wave of new construction where, where, including, uh, 14, 13 million square feet of new development in Alston Brighton, 7,000, uh, new housing units. 66% of those new housing units are studios, are one-bedrooms, are single occupancy. Only 3% of them are three, three bedrooms for, for families. And, and, and the IDP units, uh, most of them come in at 13% IDP, and it's been a struggle to get up to 15, 16%. Uh, more recently, with more stronger advocacy, we are getting up to 17%. And once in a while, we got one, one project that gave us 20%. Um, the, we need more units that are affordable, uh, and we also need a range of IDPs. The other thing, um, my other colleagues have already mentioned that the policy of some developers are building just nine units to avoid having to, uh, give any IDP units. I think we need to look at the possibility of a portfolio, uh, and evaluate their portfolio, um, to see how many units they're building, and if they won't commit to build, um, affordable housing on, in, in those projects, and then to contribute some, uh, monetary funds to, uh, to building, um, affordable housing elsewhere. Um, I, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but it's so, um, so much of our housing, when they say our IDP units come in at 70%, and the, and the young professionals and residents who want to stay and live in this neighborhood, say, who, they say, those aren't affordable for us. The people who live here cannot afford 70% of the AMI. The, the, they, our community level, in, incomes are more low to moderate income, which is closer to 50 or 60% of the area median income. So even, even, even a unit that comes in at 70% is unaffordable for the vast majority of people who live in our district. So I'm really excited to participate in this, I will be there, and, um, I, I would love to see this, uh, come to fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other discussion, a show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name to this very important hearing order. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could please add, uh, Counsel Wu, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Braden, Counsel Bach, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Royo, you already have Counsel Sabi George. Did I miss anyone who wants to add their name? Counsel Campbell, please add Counsel Campbell. Anyone else? Please also add the Chair. Docket 0331 will be referred to the Committee of Housing and Community Development. We'll move on to docket 0332.
Docket 0332, Counsel Edwards offered the following order for hearing regarding a coordination and community notice of the issuance of construction and utility permits.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam President. Uh, I think one of the biggest concerns I heard throughout, um, last year when it came to building and upgrading our infrastructure was the lack of coordination of those who are trying to do right by the city, but weren't talking to each other. Uh, when we had Boston Water and Sewer, we had Verizon, we had Comcast, we had Eversource, we had all these different entities, I think, on one street at one point. And I was trying to get home, as many of the folks in Eagle Hill were trying to do, or many of the folks in Jeffries Point in East Boston were trying to do. And literally, they blocked each side of the street, saying use the other side. So I came down one side, and I tried to go, okay, fine, and went the other way and found out that that was blocked. And it's, it's not, um, so much, um, a nefarious act or that people are trying to do wrong. I know these workers are working hard in all sorts of conditions, trying to upgrade infrastructure that needs to be upgraded. So this is not trying to slow that down. We're just trying to make sure that there's a conversation had and notice really given to the residents so we can prepare. There are people who had appointments with their home healthcare aides, they were trying to coordinate with their family members, they were trying to do all sorts of things, and, and due to lack of notice, due to lack of timing notice as well. We will be here for X amount of days, we will be blocking on this more in advance, here's the map of all of these, the areas that we're going to be working on. All of that, I, I know people can coordinate around, but if they feel that it's suddenly put upon them, and then for who knows how long, it's beyond frustrating. So this is really trying to bring all those stakeholders to the table, um, who are doing, doing good work, hard work, so that we are coordinating, coming up with almost a citywide or, or the notice, notification system, so that it isn't incumbent on just one entity. How do we coordinate that conversation? Uh, it helps me as a local politician, it would help all of my colleagues as well, so that we can have one central place to go, to provide the notice of all the work that's to be done, to then give it back out to our, um, constituents. Because that was also hard, too. It was kind of like courting cats, like, do you want this, and where are you going to be, and how are you going to do this, and have you talked to so on and so forth? And I just think it could happen much more efficiently if we just got together in one room, figured it out, and then worked on a policy and a system to notify people. Um, I'm excited for this conversation. It's a little more nuts and bolts, and you probably are used to hearing from me, but, um, it is something that was, uh, uh, an issue that I would like to help, uh, to address. So thank you very much for this moment, and I, I look forward to having a robust hearing. Um, thank you.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam President. Uh, I wish to commend the maker, ask that my name be added, um, as this is my final year on the body, uh, you're going to have to indulge me in waxing nostalgic, uh, most meetings. Uh, one of the ordinances, one of the first ordinances I did, um, which I believe just Counselors Wu and Flaherty, uh, served on the body at that time, was the gas leaks bill, uh, which was very much in line with the intent of this, and it was a very simple premise. It was making sure that our utility companies were able to coordinate with the city so that if a street was being opened up for temporary street work, and we knew there are gas leaks, they would then be alerted and fix them. Um, one of the major utilities fought this, and, and while I know I, and, and many of us are looking forward to Boston moving away from, uh, gas infrastructure and traditional fossil fuels, the fact of the matter is, we have 3,000 or 4,000 active gas leaks now. So, um, sadly, despite passing that bill nearly unanimously, having it signed into law by Mayor Walsh early in his first term, uh, the utilities have sued to prevent implementation. So, uh, I look forward to, uh, this hearing order. Again, the community, the focus is more on communication of neighbors and our constituents, which is a valid, uh, goal that I wholeheartedly support. But I'm hopeful we can again make sure that the utilities are in contact with one another so that we're able to address these things and not reinvent the wheel. We've all known, we've heard from constituents, we've seen it ourselves, when there's roadwork that's done, and then months later, or perhaps a year later, more work is done. So this is a bit, uh, a great opportunity for us to focus, uh, what is a big part of our job, making sure that we, uh, deal with these, uh, nuts and bolts issues of, uh, of government constituent service. So bravo, Counsel Edwards, please add my name.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name, uh, and to the maker, nuts and bolts is obviously what we do as city councilors, so I'm proud to work with you on this. There was actually a time, Counsel Feeny will remember, when, uh, across the, across the city, um, new streets and sidewalks would be repaired and paved, only to literally days later be dug back up again to allow for utility hookups. It was an outrage and an absolute disgrace. So fortunately, uh, this administration, we don't see that, uh, as often. I know that under the leadership of former Commissioner Michael Dennehy, and now under, uh, Mike Brule, they've done, uh, a great job of streamlining that. So are we perfect? No, but, um, happy to work, um, with, uh, the lead sponsor on this to make sure that, um, the best coordinated effort, uh, with all of our utility companies. Anytime a street is opened up, um, they need to literally do, uh, a 360. They need to reach out to all these companies to find out who needs to get in the street, when, why, and how, and, and, and sort of have that in, as a coordinated approach so that, once, um, the job is all done and the street is closed and it's repaved, uh, hopefully that, um, provided, you know, short of an emergency situation, that that street does not need to be dug up again. So I know that, in addition to the, sort of the traffic patterns and the disruption and the noise that takes place in our neighborhoods that obviously need to be monitored, that was really the major concern, was, you know, coordinating all of the different utilities to make sure that when people are getting things done, um, that it's, uh, it's a full-court press while the street or while that sidewalk is open. So, and it's important, it's an, it's an important quality of life issue, and it's what we, as, uh, as councilors get called about, uh, regularly. So, uh, proud to sponsor and, and proud to join, and, uh, will help the sponsor any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, please sign my name. Um, I won't, um, echo what Counsel O'Malley and Flaherty said, um, but I think this is an important hearing. Um, it's the nuts and bolts of city government, it's timely, it's very important. Um, I was going to say exactly what Counsel Flaherty said. I don't know if he was at my office before and stole my speech, he took my thunder. So I'm going to investigate that after. But, um, thank you to the maker for her excellent work, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel Flynn. Uh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
God bless you, Flynn, God bless. Um, just love you. Um, but no, I have to thank Counsel, on a very serious note, thank you, Counsel Edwards, for bringing this forward. This has been an ongoing conversation, um, and I was new to the body during the gas leaks conversation, and the gas leaks are very present in District 4. Um, and so anytime folks were showing up from utility companies, the conversation around gas leaks, particularly from resident and civic leaders, would always come up. Well, what can we do while you got the ground open to address this issue? So appreciate Counsel O'Malley's leadership on this. Um, but even during those conversations and other conversations, uh, they were separate, they were often separate, whether connected to that ordinance or just around coordination and lack of communication to constituents, um, around how, not only the utilities could do better, but how even internally we could do better. Whether you had public works or the transportation department going out and not necessarily knowing who was going where. Um, so I'm looking forward to the conversation. It's so timely, it continues to be an issue, um, that folks are beyond frustrated with, the lack of notification. Um, but I would also push us, of course, to invite our, all of our city departments to come, because sometimes, uh, we don't necessarily do the best job, and I know sometimes we have to coordinate with some of these external partners, which gets in the way, uh, but looking forward to engaging external and internal in this conversation. And thank you so much for calling for the hearing. Um, and please add my name. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Royo. Counsel Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I just want to thank the maker for her leadership on this. Uh, I know one thing that hopefully we can get to the bottom of is the double of polls, the double polls that they do to, uh, these electricity polls and the, and the polls that, I know this has been an issue that came up during budget season, whether or not that requires permits to just double up those polls the way they do, uh, it certainly is not attractive to neighborhoods, and it's very interesting when they do make the decision to do that. So I hope we, we get into those conversations as well. So thank you to the maker.
Thank you, and the Chair now recognizes Counsel Flaherty one more time. Counsel Flah-
Thank you, Madam President, for recognizing me before Counsel Flynn, I owe you lunch.
Oops. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes, I said, thank you for recognizing me before Counsel Flynn, I owe you lunch.
Uh, Counsel Campbell, is your hand raised one more time? Did you want to-
I'm quickly going to say this, because I think it's going to, oh, I would love some lunch, Madam President. Um, but all of us, right, we should be treating you to some lunch. Um, but I just want to say that I'm going to flag and send this to all of you, had a constituent who navigated the world of utilities, um, and came up with solutions on the double polls, um, so that we have been removing them in District 4, so that you do not have that. I mean, kudos so to Rick Yoder and Rosendale for figuring this out, um, but we'll send that to everyone as well, because it is a major issue. So thank you, Counsel Royo. And again, thank you, Counsel Edwards. And Madam President, clearly, we all owe you lunch.
Thank you so much. Uh, not seeing any other discussion, if folks want to raise their physical hands, uh, to add their name. Madam Clerk, if we could please add Counsel Sabi George, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Braden, Counsel Bach, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Wu, Counsel O'Malley. Um, I believe you have Flaherty and Flynn. Certainly add the Chair, uh, to that hearing order. This is docket 332. Yes, and we will refer that to the Committee on Planning and Development. Um, we will move on to docket 0333.
Docket 0333, Counsel Braden offered the following resolution, affirming the naming of the playground at Hooker and Sorento Streets in mem- in memory of James H. Roberts.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I bring before the Council today a resolution to affirm the naming of the playground, uh, at Hooker and Sorento Streets in Alston in memory of the late James H. Roberts. Um, after being contacted by Mr. Roberts' daughter regarding a discrepancy in the official renaming and dedication of the playground, um, it may, amaze us all to know that, following the death of Mr. James H. Roberts in May of 1969, the Boston City Council voted in June of 1969 to adopt a resolution offered by the then-Council President Gerald O'Leary to rename the playground in, at her, at Hooker and Sorento Streets in Alston in Mr. Roberts' memory. Uh, however, the staff at the City Archives and the Park, and Parks and Recreation Department and Commission discovered that likely to an overs, like, likely in an oversight, then Mayor White did not bring the Council Resolution to the Parks and Recreation Commission to formally ratify and the official renaming of the playground in honor of Mr. Roberts. So over 50 years later, on January 25th, 19, 2021, the Commission voted to formally ratify the Council Resolution passed in 1969. Heaven help us if all of our resolutions take this long to get ratified, but here we are. Passed in 1969 to formally and officially name the playground at Hooker and Sorento Streets in memory of James H. Roberts. Mr. Roberts was a resident of Seattle Street in Alston and a member of the African-American community that lived in that neighborhood, and served the Commonwealth for 33 years as state, in, in the State Treasury Department, serving as the Director of the Vietnam Bonus at the time of his death. He was a veteran of the Massachusetts State Guard, and act, and active in the Mass, uh, N double A C C, and the Alston Civic Association, as well as the Boy Scout Program sponsored by the Alston Congregational Church. Although none of today's councilors were present in 19, in, for the 1969 vote, I don't think so, don't think any of us were there, I believe it is important that we observe, as we observe Black History Month and continue conversations on achieving a more equitable representative, uh, city, our body as a council should pass this resolution over 50 years later to correct this oversight and affirm the naming of the James H. Roberts Memorial Playground in honor of Roberts, Mr. Roberts' service to his community. I also want to thank the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation, and the City Archives for assisting in resolving this issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your, you, for, for digging this up and making sure that we're addressing this. Um, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, and I just want to say thank you to my colleague, Counsel Braden, uh, for bringing this important information to the City Council, and for Counsel Braden to, uh, recognize Mr. Roberts for his service to our country, um, as a United States veteran. It may have happened 50 years ago, but recognizing his service is appropriate, it's timely, and we can never say thank you to Mr. Roberts and his family for their sacrifice to our country. So I want to say thank you- country. So I want to say thank you to my good friend and colleague, Counsel Braden.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other discussion, a show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Wu, Counsel Savi George, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Bach, Counsel Baker, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Campbell. Did I get everyone who wants to add their name? Please also add the Chair. Counsel Braden seeks suspension of our rules and adoption of docket 0333. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0333, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yeah.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Savi George.
Yes.
Counsel Savi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0333 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you so much. We will move on to docket 0334.
Thank you. Docket 0334, Counsel Savi George offered the following resolution in support of Senate docket 519 and House docket 1161, an act relative to universal school meals.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Savi George. Counsel Savi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This resolution is in support of SD 519 and HD 1161, which would make school meals available to all Massachusetts students regardless of their family income level. Expanding access to free breakfast and lunch to everyone will ensure all students are fed and able to learn at school while also removing one indicator of economic difference in our school communities. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other discussion on the matter. So a show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if we could please add Counsel Flynn, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Wu, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Braden, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Campbell. Did I get everyone who wants to add their name? Counsel Bach. Anyone else want to add their name? Please also add the Chair. Counsel Savi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0334. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0334, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yeah.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Savi George.
Yes.
Counsel Savi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0334 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to docket 0335.
Docket 0335, Counsel Savi George offered the following resolution, recognizing Boston Ujima Project's 2021 Citywide Assembly, "We Be Knowin' a Boston Ujima Project Celebration of Everyday Democracy During February 14th through the 22nd, 2021."
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Savi George. Counsel Savi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. The Boston Ujima Project is a democratic, member-run organization building a cooperative business, arts, and investment ecosystem in Boston. Their mission is to return wealth to working-class communities of color and build a local economy that supports all of us. From February 14th to the 22nd, the Ujima Project is hosting a series of community conversations ranging from exploring neighborhood needs to national organizing to investing in our local community. Throughout this week, there will be powerful events with some of our leading artists and writers, including Boston's poet laureate Portia O. I strongly encourage everyone to virtually tune in and ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution, recognizing this important event series and the great work of the Ujima Project here in Boston.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edward, you have the floor.
Thank you very briefly. I was lucky to be in the room when the Ujima Project was being discussed and coming about. And I just want to acknowledge some of the folks who were part of that. Aaron Tanaka, who's helped to be part of that conversation. The late, great Counsel Turner was also there and part of this. And this is part of his understanding of growing democracy and wealth in the community. So he was also at a lot of these conversations. And so I just, in terms of, yes, we need to celebrate it as a body, but just recognize so many people I know, milking also and looking at cooperative housing and co-growth and the Susu model from a lot of African-American communities and immigrant communities, the growing together and growing bit by bit. You go get yours together, then we move to somebody else to get theirs together. This is a model that's actually been part of a lot of cultures. And to see Ujima grow this much off of that model is a beautiful thing. And I just wanted to, you know, ancestors have been doing this for a long time, and we codified it and got it to this point. We got a lot of support from foundations. But again, acknowledge that. And thank you, Counsel Savi George, for bringing that to the forefront. I hope everyone participates and actually comes to one of the days.
Thank you so much, Counsel Edwards. Not seeing any other discussion, a show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Wu, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Bach, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Braden, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Flaherty. Did I get everyone who wants to add their name? Please also add the Chair. Counsel Savi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0335. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0335, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel, excuse me, Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Savi George. Counsel Savi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes. Yes. I don't know.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0335 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. We will move on to docket 0336.
Docket 0336, Counsel Savi George offered the following resolution in support of allowing students to repeat their grade due to the educational disruption of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Savi George. Counsel Savi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This resolution urges the district to formulate a policy allowing students the ability to repeat a grade or get additional support going into the next school year. We don't have time to wait for a student retention policy or to have a hearing on this matter. It's part of why we're calling for this resolution to be passed today, because we cannot let more of our students fall behind developmentally and academically due to this pandemic. We must explore every opportunity to proactively support our students, including putting programs in place for this upcoming summer. Students and families need time to review their options and make the best decision possible. We also know that this pandemic has been too disruptive for our students, and we cannot expect them to simply rebound once full in-person learning returns. I also think that it's really important that this place be, that this policy be evaluated as we know the implications of retention or too much retention can have on student enrollment and classroom size. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution and send it over to the Boston Public Schools, the School Department, the Superintendent, and the Boston School Committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other discussion, a show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flynn, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Bach, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Braden, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Flaherty. Did I get everyone who wants to add their name? Please also add the Chair. Counsel Savi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0336. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0336, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Excuse me. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yeah.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Savi George.
Yes.
Counsel Savi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0336 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to docket 0337.
Docket 0337, Counsel Savi George offered the following resolution, recognizing February 1st through the 5th, 2021 as National School Counseling Week.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Savi George. Counsel Savi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Our school counselors are essential components of our school communities, providing educational and emotional support to our students. This resolution honors the great work of our school counselors and the work that they formally declares this last week as National School Counseling Week. We need to make sure that every single Boston Public School has at least one full-time school counselor or psychologist on staff. This will help foster a culture that allows more students' abilities to thrive and think about how to realize their potential. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution.
Thank you. Not seeing any other discussion, a show of physical hands for those who would like to sign on. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flynn, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Braden, Counsel Bach, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Wu, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Flaherty. Anyone else want to add their name? Counsel Campbell. Thank you so much. Please also add the Chair. Counsel Savi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0337. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0337, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yeah.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Savi George.
Yes.
Counsel Savi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0337 has been adopted unanimously.
We will move on to the last docket in this section, docket 0338.
Docket 0338, excuse me. Counsel Savi George offered the following resolution in recognition of February 7th, 2021 as National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Savi George. Counsel Savi George, you have the floor.
This past Sunday, February 7th, was National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. While the rate of new HIV infections is decreasing overall, Black Americans are disproportionately impacted, representing 43% of all new HIV diagnoses in diagnosis in 2019. As a community, we all have to fight against the stigma, promote prevention, and increase access to testing and treatment. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution.
Thank you. Not seeing any other discussion, show of physical hands for those who want to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counsel Flynn, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Bach, Counsel Braden, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Mahia. Did I get everyone who would like to add their name? Please also add the Chair. Counsel Savi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0338. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0338, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel.
It's my name, Skip.
Excuse me. Okay.
William normally does that to me.
Never would happen.
I'm a yes. I'm a yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Please excuse me. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Savi George.
Yes.
Counsel Savi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0338 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you so much. We will now move on in our agenda. Okay. Late files. Now, first, the green sheets. Nothing from the green sheets. We're moving on to late files, Madam Clerk.
Yes. We have one late file. And would you like me to read it into, and then we can pull?
I just want to make sure that folks are looking at their email to get the late file. This is a hearing order. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the first section of the late file and the last section so we have it properly before the body. This is a hearing order, and I will say right here at the beginning that I want to, as someone who frowns upon late files, I want to take responsibility for offering one. But given the subject matter, it is very timely and should not wait. So I appreciate my colleagues for their indulgence as someone who frowns upon late files. So thank you.
Would you like me to pull the committee, to pull the council to bring it properly before the body?
Well, seeing and hearing no objections, we can get it before the body. I want you, though, people to see the late file in their inbox and for you to read it before, read the docket so that it's properly before the body. And then I'm going to get out of the way and call upon our Vice President because I am a cosponsor on this late file.
Would you like me to read first and last, Madam President?
Yes, but can we make sure that there is no objection to adding this late file to the agenda? We should make sure that we take the roll call to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the.
No, quite all right. Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel. Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, this late file is properly before the body and has been.
If you read it, I'm just going to ask our Vice President to come and he'll ask you to read the docket.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. Mr. Vice President, would you do the honors?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first and final clause of the late file matter that's properly before us?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Offered by counselors Michelle Wu and Kim Janey, order in the City Council, an order for hearing regarding equity in the City of Boston's procurement and purchasing, whereas in December 2017, the Boston City Council passed an ordinance promoting equity in the City of Boston contracts, which included changes to the city's request for proposals process, and required quarterly reporting on discretionary spending and the number of value, the number and value of contracts awarded to businesses owned by women and people of color and Boston residents to eliminate disparities that local small businesses face. Therefore, be it ordered at the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council, hold a hearing to discuss the results of the report on the procurement process in the City of Boston, and that representatives from the Economic Development Cabinet, other interested parties, and the public be invited to testify filed on February 10th, 2021.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Rosendale, Counselor Wu. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I am grateful to our Council President for her partnership and for broaching this. I wasn't going to bring up the late file on this one, but it is extremely timely that we get this refile in. This has been tweaked to accommodate and acknowledge the fact that the City of Boston's soon-to-be-released disparity study, done over the course of four years, that this council pushed for, advocated for, and held oversight meetings to ensure happened, that that shows essentially what we knew all along. The numbers that have been touted are 11% for MWBEs, Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprises, over the five-year period analyzed, but we need to be very specific about what that breaks down to by group. And so, most of that is to WBEs. If you look at just the amount to businesses owned by Black, sorry, contracts going to businesses owned by Black entrepreneurs, that was 0.4%, and just 1.2% total for Black and Latinx-owned businesses receiving contracts. This is a huge, I mean, I want to emphasize, it's not just about hitting certain numbers for the sake of hitting numbers. This is about what we're missing out on as a city, the opportunity, the wealth building, the jobs, the multiplication effect of investing our taxpayer dollars and getting all the value we can from our communities, making it possible for people to get a foothold and connect everything we're trying to do on the council, affordable housing, with the jobs and opportunities, with the resources for families and for young people. This is the crux of it, and it's just within reach. So there are some incredibly actionable steps that we continue to push for. The study highlights many of them in terms of unbundling contracts, and I stand with BECA and lift up their advocacy and leadership in calling for direct changes, echo all of what they've lifted up, and want to ensure that we continue to keep up the pressure on this. A study, right, doesn't get us to where we need to go. We need to see actionable changes, and we know what we need to do. It's a matter of having the political will to get it done. So thank you, Madam President, for your partnership. I'm grateful to this council for our work together over many years now, legislating, oversight, and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. The Chair now recognizes the Council President. Counselor Janey, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President, and I want to start by thanking my sister-in-service, Counselor Wu, for her leadership in this space and her partnership here. Every year since I've joined this body, we have filed this hearing order together. This is a huge issue facing our city and a missed opportunity. I just want to lift up, one, something that I've said over and over and over again. If we are serious about closing the wealth gap in Boston, we know there are two ways to do that, and it's ownership. Both ways are ownership. Homeownership, we talked about that earlier in this meeting. There's some important initiatives and items before us, this body, that will help us get there, as well as business ownership. That is how we close the wealth gap, and this is a missed opportunity, but it also presents, I think, new opportunities moving forward. I've said many times before becoming a counselor, the importance of breaking up these contracts through my advocacy to this body before I joined this body, and I'm reminded of, you know, different companies that are eager and willing to participate. One in my district that delivers food would love to, not just delivers food, you know, they make food, they deliver food. It's a great company. It's owned by Black people. They employ lots of people of color, many whom are immigrants. They have a great model in terms of profit sharing, and they're locked out of contracts because oftentimes they're too big. I want to just lift up some of the stats because this, this is a period from 2014 to 2019, so it's a five-year period that the disparity study covered. Counselor Wu already lifted up the 1.2% of $2.1 billion. 1.2% of $2.1 billion spent in city contracts was awarded to Black and Latinx companies. We obviously can do better, and we must do better. $9.4 million or .4%, not 4%, .4% of total spending went to Black-owned businesses. $18.2 million or .8%, not 8%, .8%. So it's less than 1%. Total spending went to Latinx-owned businesses. $18.2 million or 1.1% of total spending went to Asian-owned businesses. We can do better, and we must do better. We have to do better if we are going to have an economic recovery that is equitable. We know that these numbers, 2014 to 2019, that's pre-COVID. So just imagine what this means post-pandemic. The companies, many of whom are struggling, may not even be around to take advantage of new opportunities because they've been left out for so long. We must do better on this so that we can truly have a recovery that is equitable in terms of health as well as wealth. So again, I am grateful for my colleagues here. I'm grateful to those in the Walsh administration who are working on this issue and looking for new ways of combating this long persisting problem here in our city, but now is the time to do something different, and I believe we have the tools to do it, and we just need to do it. So grateful again to this body, looking forward to working with my colleagues on the council, with those in community, with business owners, and with the administration to find ways to combat this issue and make sure that Boston truly is a city for all of us. So thank you again, Counselor Wu. Thank you to all of my colleagues, and again, thank you for your indulgence with the late file that I frown upon.
Quite all right, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. Quite all right. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Dorchester, Counselor Anisa Asabi George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. I think that the challenge here is the state procurement laws. That's a significant issue. What we need, in addition to this hearing order, I would argue, is a home rule petition so that that would be the tool that could better address these disparities and expedite the implementation of the recommendations put forth in this study. State procurement law, specifically Chapter 30B, dictates that the procurement process for municipalities must adhere to that 30B, that Chapter 30B, when requesting contractual services. Changes to this law are the vital missing piece to increasing access to city contracts for our residents. I'm happy to draft a home rule petition in partnership with the lead sponsors of this hearing order before us. I do believe that that is the better tool and will allow the city to unbundle these large contracts to ensure that minority and female-owned businesses can fairly compete. When we think about the awarding of these opportunities and the desire to award them at a far higher level, a home rule petition is the tool that we need in addition to this hearing order, which is certainly an important part of the conversation, but let's work to change state law to fix this process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Asabi George. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from Hyde Park, Counselor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to the makers for taking on what I consider one of the major issues and has been a major issue in this city for decades. I would just say, as we do these things, as we look at home rule petitions or as we talk about hearings, that one of the things that I would like us to be mindful of is not creating a new reality where women and people of color are locked out of major contracts, but instead giving the crumbs of what's left through either forced subcontracting or whatever, and we're not creating a new glass ceiling that essentially continues to lock out people of color and women from these major contracts and instead creates sort of a two-pronged economy where the major contracts still go to white men predominantly, but then they are forced or they do subcontract with women or people of color. I think there's certainly lots of discussion and ways to move on this, and I would certainly love to see action on this, and I trust in the leadership of those who are proposing this and moving forward on this. So I know that this is just an issue I want to make sure we draw attention to, that we don't create sort of a two-pronged economy, one for wealthy white businesses and another for women and people of color who are trying to grow their businesses to be, get those contracts eventually. So thank you to the makers, and I look forward to seeing how this home rule petition takes shape and the ways in which we move forward with this discussion. So thank you all.
Thank you.
And my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Please add Counselor Arroyo's name, and I'm sorry, I believe Counselor Asabi George, Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Anisa Asabi George's name as well. The Chair now recognizes the District Counselor from Mattapan, Counselor Campbell. The floor is yours.
No, thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to my council colleagues for their leadership and continued leadership on this issue, as well as my other council colleagues as well, including those who are no longer on the body but have been fighting for a really long time to address this issue. And it's not just a missed opportunity. Yes, that is true. It is an absolute failure of the administration to not have made more substantial progress towards equity in city contracts, as we've been talking about this for years. And I stand with my council colleagues, of course, with all the organizations on the ground that have been fighting on this issue and fighting for the city to do better, BECA, of course, ICIC, and so many others, including business owners themselves. I think we have all engaged with business owners who have been frustrated by the process, who have been frustrated and maybe angry at the exclusion of them. And many of these businesses, of course, are owned by people of color. They exist in all of our districts, and I do think, of course, we can push for state law to change, and there are things that can be done to make it easier. We can do so much more on the city level without going through a home rule petition process. We can do that, too, but there's so much more we can do to ensure that we are intentionally investing in these businesses that are owned by people of color and women, that we are unbundling these large contracts, streamlining the procurement process, of course, to make it easier for folks to apply, and making sure that every single business, especially women and minority-owned businesses in the City of Boston, have access to capital, technical assistance, mentoring, entrepreneurial networks, and so many other things that they need. We can do that now. And if we are going to, like Council President Janey said, eradicate the racial wealth gap, make Boston finally the unequal city, because we still have that history and reputation around the country of being one of the most unequal cities in the country. If we're going to change that and come back from COVID-19 to ensure that every single worker will have a job, especially our low-wage workers, and to ensure our businesses, which are building wealth, not just for themselves and their families, but for their communities, if we're going to do all of this, which is essential to our economic recovery as a city, it is absolutely important that the City of Boston do their business better. With a budget that is over close to $4 billion, it is absolutely unacceptable that, one, we haven't been transparent. This study, I have been getting requests for this study. It should be out there. Some of us have it, some of us don't. If we are transparent about the data and transparent about the problem, then release the study already. In addition to that, it's really important that, of course, we set goals and targets. We can do that, but that we maximize the ecosystem that exists in the City of Boston. We're blessed with robust industry, private sector, a large nonprofit sector, a philanthropic sector, so many sectors that so many municipalities across the country are so jealous of. We have that ecosystem to make sure every single business in the City of Boston has everything they need to succeed, and most importantly, to thrive, not just within their neighborhood, but across the entire City of Boston. And so I am looking forward to this hearing. Thank you to my council colleagues, and thank you for making it a late file because it is a pressing issue. I think all of us have been getting calls about this issue, and thank you for your leadership. Looking forward to working with all of you on this pressing issue and pressing concerns. And again, thank you, Madam President, for the indulgence.
Thank you very much, Counselor Campbell. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Andrea Campbell. Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Dorchester, Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I just wanted to first say two things. One is that please add my name to this hearing order, and I also want to make note that as the Chair of Small Business and Workforce Development, every single public hearing that I participated in, I always asked the administration, where are these contracts and why were they not being distributed equitably? And while I appreciate Counselor Asabi George's idea of going to the state, I think that, as Counselor Campbell noted, is that we have a responsibility and an opportunity to really lead here in this city council and make the noise that we need to hold ourselves accountable to this issue. So I think that the hearing is exactly what we need in this moment in time and looking forward to participating, and please add my name.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please add Counselor Julia Mejia as a co-sponsor. Would anyone else who hasn't spoken yet like to speak before we go back to the author, lead author, seeing no further discussion? The Chair now calls on the at-large Counselor from Rosendale and the lead sponsor of this hearing order.
Oh, Wu.
The floor is yours. I apologize, Vice President O'Malley. I just got, I get really incensed about this topic, and I just really want to emphasize all that is within our control at the city level to do on this issue. So I'm eager and grateful to partner and work on moving forward, what we need to move forward at the state level, but I want to just lay on the table very clearly, state procurement laws and many of those supposed barriers did not apply at all during this public health emergency, right? It was gone, leveled. The city was free to do whatever we could do to get those contracts going. $17 million were spent, and we know that thanks to a 17F order from this council to be able to exercise that oversight. Of those 17 millions of dollars put out there, one contract, just in the same range of percentage points, went, one contract went to a locally-owned business of color, right, with no barriers whatsoever from procurement 30B or anything like that. So this is fundamentally an issue of political will. We don't have a purchasing plan that lets small businesses prepare and know when to even bid on these multi-year contracts. You can't expect people just to rely on the transparency of a data portal where you have to check every single day what contracts are available to bid on that day, but you can't look ahead or prepare your supply chains or anything like that. And we also know that, you know, the City of Boston is a place where there are email lists that exist to tell people when these contracts will come up, and it's not open and transparent. We know feedback from small businesses tells us that the process for bidding with the city, in fact, is more cumbersome than bidding with the state, where you can get automatic notifications when there are contracts that are, you know, related to your area of business that come up, or the forms, you only have to fill out one time, and then you're good to go any other time you bid. to go any other time you bid. So there is a lot that we need to do immediately, ASAP, this week and month. I look forward to the longer-term conversations and the multipronged approach, but I do not want to give an inch of excuse or space for us to say that there's not more that we have entirely within our control locally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Wu. Would any other councils wish to add their name as cosponsors to this late-file order? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Lydia Edwards, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Kenzie Bach, Counselor Andrea Campbell, Counselor Michael F. Flaherty. Please add the chair's name. In this late-file matter, we'll be referred to the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you all. We will move on to the consent agenda. The chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, did I miss you assigning this to committee?
Did you assign this to committee? I didn't assign it. The vice president would have assigned it. I'm sorry.
I did, Madam President. Madam Clerk, to the committee.
I'm sorry.
Post-audit and Oversight Committee.
Thank you so much. I'm very sorry about that.
Thank you. So the chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, you could call the roll.
Thank you. For the consent agenda, Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, the consent agenda has been approved unanimously.
Thank you so much. We will move on to announcements. Show of blue hands, or they're not blue anymore, your Zoom hands. For those who want to speak, make a brief announcement. Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention somebody. A couple weeks ago, I was out, and it was a young man whose parents had a friend, my wife knows the mom, and I know the dad, Lance Norwood Jr. He was shot about a month ago, and ironically, Christie was at a public safety meeting the night he got shot. I just wanted to mention his name, that today is his 22nd birthday, and he was taken off life support like two weeks ago. So I just wanted to, you know, just say the name. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we, one of the resolutions in the consent agenda was a resolution honoring Benny White. As we all know, this is Black History Month, and it's a time to reflect on, honor, and celebrate achievements of African-Americans and to recognize their central role in U.S. history. And as part of that consent agenda, I filed a resolution honoring the contributions of Benny Whites, who was a veteran and co-founded the 54th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry Regiment Reenactment Group, which is located in my district of Hyde Park. His role was crucial to uplifting the stories of African-Americans serving in the 54th Regiment. And in the spirit of Black History Month, I want to recognize that fact and honor his memory today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I think you all may remember that my predecessor in District 8, Counselor Zachem, was really leading the way in advocating for a city-funded voucher program. And thanks to many other members of this body, I know Counselor Edwards and others are very focused on this, and thanks to the Mass Association of HUD tenants who pushed it, and Mayor Walsh and Justin Starett in the Budget Office really made it a priority, and it was funded in last year's budget. Since then, DND and the BHA have been working hard on implementation. Our Joel Wall from Counselor Edwards' office has been deeply involved in that and grateful to him and the Housing Authority. And, you know, they, as people may have seen in the papers, at the request of community members, that's going to turn into a project-based voucher program to really make more housing affordable and accessible to extremely low-income Bostonians. And so the BHA is now releasing a NOFA, a Notice of Funding Availability, for these new project-based city vouchers. And us having a city voucher program is just, it's a real, it's a first-of-its-kind kind of thing. It's really exciting, but it means that now we're at the stage of the process where the BHA needs property owners to apply for the voucher funding so that they can begin to award that funding and line up referrals and actually get people housed. So I just wanted to use this announcement time to say that due to state procurement policies and BHA rules, the request for applications itself is available only by emailing bids, B-I-D-S, at bostonhousing.org. I think all counselors should have the NOFA from the BHA in their inboxes, but I'd also just encourage housing providers who might be watching to reach out to that email, bids, B-I-D-S, at bostonhousing.org to get further information. Just really wanted to use this channel and all channels we have, because it's exciting that we funded this on the city side. It's exciting that our city staff have worked really hard on how to implement it, and now we need to make sure that this process for actually putting it out there and getting used goes successfully. So I just wanted to raise that today and give a shout out to my predecessor, Counselor Zachem, for all of his work on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I just wanted to make a quick announcement. On Saturday, February 13, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there's going to be a vaccination clinic for veterans age 65 and over. It's going to be at the VFW Boston Police Post on Morton Street in Dorchester. It's a great opportunity for veterans, again, age 65 and over, that are enrolled in the VA healthcare system to get their vaccination. I want to say thank you to the VA Healthcare Center. I want to say thank you to Rob Santiago from the Veterans Department of the City of Boston, and my good friend Congressman Stephen Lynch for working together to make this possible. I'll be over there on Saturday, just thanking the staff for the incredible work of helping our veterans get vaccinated. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just a couple of announcements. There was a sudden loss of young life in East Boston, and I just wanted to say their names as well, as the families are, I know, going through a great deal of pain. They're from our East Boston High School community, and I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of Azaya Ortiz, as well as Alexander Cabrera. It was sudden, it's painful, and it's, I don't know how else to say this, except just to say their name and to acknowledge the amazing, the hard loss for our community. Another loss that we had is from one of our seniors, one of the stalwarts of our community, Peter Cadenali. He died recently. He is, he was in his 90s. He was lived a vibrant, beautiful life in East Boston and was considered one of our stakeholders. And Estela Matina mentioned him today on Facebook in the picture that showed that he was part of our political scene, part of the heart of East Boston. And so he was, he was a good man, and we lost him as well. And then finally, I just wanted to quickly just note and congratulate the administration on the recent filing to increase the linkage. As you know, the filing does two things. It increases the housing fund contribution by $3.97, and it increases the job contribution by 61 cents, bringing the linkage total amount to $15, and I think 39 cents. While that is good, we want to be clear, the process that I think we, I had envisioned, and that, who I had hoped that we would be doing, would be a robust, community-led process so that when we get to a number, and then we have the shot to increase our linkage, it was going to be community-led. Now, I understand it may have been community-formed, but I just learned about this on Tuesday, and they're having the vote tomorrow at the BPDA. And it does, to a certain extent, help us to move the ball forward, but it also tends to tie the hands of whoever would be the next mayor, who may also want to move the ball forward, and who also may want to have a robust conversation that's led by the community, especially because we're dealing with economic uncertainty. So if we're going to move it, and it's one time, and there's going to be pushback if we go even further in less than a year, I think that I would have preferred that there have been a robust, open conversation that when we're going to do it, instead of being filed and being passed in the same week at the BPDA. I also, you know, the number 61 cents increase for job training, I think we could have done better. And I do wonder if the $3.97, while it's a 42% increase, we were already too low. So I just wanted to note that, again, the process that we had envisioned, that had a back-and-forth, a large report with the BPDA, just imagine if any one of us individually would have proposed an increase, how long or how fast that report would have taken to come back to us, and if that would have been completely supportive of our suggestion of the number or not. And I just want to be, for consistency's sake, that we come up with a process that really looks like it is informed by the community. And this one looks like it was, you know, it was a response, it was quick, it was done, and it's going to sail right through. And that's okay, but that number still, for many of us, is too low, especially for the job. I do want to, I did want to note, though, it is complemented by what we filed last week, and many of you co-sponsored, which is to make sure that in our zoning code, we have automatic increases on the, with CPI. It's in the home rule petition, we need it in the code. The other thing that is also that we filed, or I filed last week, is to make sure as there are amendments come up, that people have to comply with the recent and the most, the highest ID, excuse me, linkage at that moment. My biggest concern is by doing it one time right now, there are a lot of projects in the pipeline that have already filed, they're going to say, well, it doesn't apply to us, the new rate, right? The new rate doesn't apply to us because we already filed, we'll go with the old rate. And there might be a rush now to get the old rate in while this new rate comes in. And so, again, we need to make sure that as they amend and change their product, projects, excuse me, that the new higher rate applies to them. So I just wanted, again, congratulate the administration, but just say, I think we, I hope that we will do better in the back-and-forth of getting to that sweet spot of a number, because I don't expect us to be able to increase it every single time, and we don't want to tie anyone's hands. We want it to be community-led. Thank you, Madam President, for your indulgence.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to be clear, this will not be the time for valedictory remarks. There will be plenty of time for that, but I didn't want this meeting to close without acknowledging you, Madam President, and your leadership. And I think it's highly, highly likely that this may be the last time you are presiding, at least for a while potentially, but very likely that you will ascend to a very important position in short order, and certainly before we meet again, not definitively, but very likely. And I just, as your vice president, as the longest-serving member, wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge you and how grateful we are for you. You have led with class and character during the most difficult year of any of our lives, of any of our lives politically, professionally. This has been an incredibly trying time for all of us, but certainly as local officials. And we're grateful for your leadership, for your dedication, and I know I speak for all of us when I say how proud we are of you and how excited we are for you to go and make some history in our city. Congratulations, and job well done.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You got me speechless. Thank you. Really appreciate that. And since it may be, and you brought it up, I also want to acknowledge that perhaps it may be. So we have been working on transition. It's been great to have Counselor O'Malley join our prep sessions, he and members of his team. They've been delightful, and earlier today, just expressed my deep, deep gratitude to that team. So I want to, again, lift up all those behind the scenes who do incredible work. Obviously, our central staff specifically want to lift up Carrie and Christine and Julie, who are part of that process, obviously, Michaela, our clerk, and then obviously, your new team. You have been with, you know, the council along, you and Counselor Flaherty can duke that out. I'm not going to get into the middle of who's been here longer, consistent years, or whatever, whatever it's been. But as such, you know, I may not be here for your last meeting, Counselor O'Malley. I don't know, but wanted to acknowledge you with this. So as you do take over, as you take over, you will have your own gavel here, and this is just to recognize your years of service. I know we usually hold these to the end of the year, and should I have the opportunity to come back as a counselor or as mayor for that meeting, I certainly would want to acknowledge you then, but wanted to make sure that you got this, that I could hand this off to you just as a gift on behalf of all of the council, as you preside over these council meetings coming up. I don't know if I'll be at the next one, it's two weeks away, we will see, but in any event, we've got this gift for you, and just wanted to extend my deep gratitude to you. And again, on behalf of all of us, thank you so much. I have a couple of more updates in terms of announcements, and just wanted to also say, I know Counselor Flynn brought up the new vaccine site coming online, which is so important. The more we can get this information out around testing, you know, our testing numbers are taking a dip. We need people to continue to get tested as part of this process, and we need to make sure that our folks have access to the vaccine. So please continue to share that information, use your community meetings, your platforms, et cetera, to get the word out. I had the pleasure of visiting the Strand Theater testing site with Chief Martinez just yesterday morning. There's an amazing team over there doing testing, and soon they will become a vaccine location. So we just want to make sure to get that information out to our residents. We've got to make sure that people have access to the vaccine as well as confidence in the vaccine. We know that there's still a lot of hesitation, and we've got to cut through that so that we can get to the other side of this pandemic and reopen our businesses and get workers back to work. So just wanted to lift that up. I also want to acknowledge that you probably have heard the news that today is the last council meeting for Fernando Ortiz. He joined us recently, and we're certainly sad to see him leave, but excited for the new opportunity that awaits him. He is going to Washington, D.C. So that is very exciting. He will be in the Labor Department there. We certainly wish him well, and we thank him for his service to the city and certainly to the council. I also want to extend a warm welcome and let Chantel know that we're so excited to bring her on board. This is our new liaison for the city council, Chantel Lima-Barbosa. She is a graduate of the Jeremiah E. Burke High School and UMass Amherst, where she earned a master's degree in 2018. She has most recently served as the Mid-Dorchester Liaison through the Office of Neighborhood Services and the Cape Verdean Liaison. Her knowledge of city operations and our neighborhoods will serve us well on this body, and so I hope you will all join me in welcoming Chantel, who, her camera is now on, so we can all see her. Thank you so much. Certainly a warm welcome. We're excited to have you, and we wish Fernando all the best. We will have to send your gift, Fernando. This all happened so quickly, but we'll have to send you a gift to D.C. as we know you are leaving soon. So many thanks to both of you on behalf of the entire city council. So that is it for me for announcements. I did not prepare a farewell speech, so I would say more if I had, and my hope is that you will certainly indulge me for that opportunity at the appropriate time. I expect maybe in two weeks I will be presiding, so maybe we'll do one then, or if I have to come back. But in any event, I just want to say how incredibly important the last three years working with all of you have been for me, and certainly working with all of our folks outside of this Zoom, in terms of residents and activists and advocates, who have been so important to our work as a body, and just look forward to continuing to work on these important issues. And so I'm just, I'm grateful, my heart is full, really grateful to all of you. You guys are amazing, and it's been incredible. So we should move on in our agenda before we get all teary-eyed and sappy here, so we will move on. As is always the case, we close out our city As is always the case, we close out our city council meetings in tribute to those we lost. Uh, we certainly want to continue to lift up all of those who have died because of COVID-19, um, and continue to keep, uh, those families in our thoughts and our prayers and at the forefront of our advocacy, because thoughts and prayers are not enough. So, we will continue to make sure that, uh, we are fighting this pandemic, but wanted to lift up, uh, families all throughout our city. Uh, for Counselor Baker, Dorothy Dottie McCulgan. For Counselor Edwards, Peter Cardinal. For Counselors Flaherty and Flynn, James Donovan, Ed Schifflecht, and Donna N. Casper. For the Chair, Purcell Pearson, Janey Parsons, and Willie Mae Glaze. And for the entire city council, Mary Wilson, founding member of Supremes, and Michael Ritchie, Boston firefighter. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again remotely on Wednesday, February 24th, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.